Hey, we want to thank you everybody for coming out tonight for this TSP workshop with the Planning Commission and the City Council. So I will hand this over to Taylor and let her get started. It's a long one.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this is the final City Council briefing and we're happy to have the Planning Commission join you all tonight. For the Transportation System Plan Update, or TSP, this is a project we've been working on for coming up on two years now funded mostly by TGM grant money from the state. It is a long-range plan, so the planning horizon for this project is 20 years. So keep that in mind as you're looking at the projects. These are, these are projects we're anticipating would be needed for to accommodate and guide the growth across the next 20 years of the city's growth. And where we're at in the project now is we're coming up on adoption hearings. We've done a ton of work over the past two years that has now all come together in this draft Transportation System Plan and the corresponding code amendments, which you have both of those in front of you. And currently, we're looking at adoption here, the first adoption hearing being scheduled for mid-November, might happen late November, and then that will be with the Planning Commission and then the City Council will have their first hearing we're anticipating in December, probably on the 11th. And so in order to prepare for those adoption hearings to go smoothly, it's a huge plan. So you know, we want to make sure that you all have plenty of time to understand the material that's in here. And so one of the main objectives of this meeting tonight is to answer any last questions that you all have about what's in the plan, what's in the code amendments, and especially have you all discuss amongst yourselves and, you know, bring up any feedback that might be, you know, changes you might want to see before this comes before you again for adoption. So that's, that's the most important thing in my mind is, is we really want to know what needs to change, if anything. And I think with that, I'm going to hand it over to John Baskett with DKS, who will give kind of a general overview of the plan. I think we'll have opportunities throughout his presentation to kind of stop and check in and find out if people have questions or comments along the way. Does that sound right, John? Sounds good. Yes. And then we have the presentation that we'll share on the screen.
There we go. All right, so go ahead and go to the next slide. As Taylor mentioned, kind of our objective tonight is to give you an overview of the draft TSP. I think the last time we, we got together and kind of gave a presentation and talked about the material that was developing in the TSP was back in May, I think. At that point, we were largely going through the, the draft projects and some of the standards, street cross-sections, things like that. By and large, there's not a lot of like brand-new material. It's more of ways we've modified, hopefully, things that you've seen in the past. There's a little bit of new stuff and I'll cover that too, but the idea is just explain what's in the TSP, maybe where some of the new things to specifically look at throughout your review and, and talk about some of the refinements that we've made. So go ahead and go to the next slide. Let's see, so there's our schedule in the upper right corner that is mostly visible, zoom boxes. There we go, thanks. So we are nearly complete with this process, hoping to start the adoption process next month, as Taylor mentioned. Since the last time we met, which was in the spring, we completed our second round of community engagement. As I mentioned also, we have done a few rounds of revisions to what we had in, in the content that we had provided at that time, incorporating feedback from our stakeholder group from the public through the, the workshop and other outreach efforts, as well as from the meeting that we had here with this group in May. Some of the new stuff that we've developed that I'll, I'll talk about is we identified, a lot of the input that we asked for through the public workshop was about project prioritization. And so from that and a lot of the input that we got from various committees, we identified a high-priority project lists and financially constrained project lists, and I'll explain more what those are later. We put together this draft TSP and of course, we are having the last series of meetings before adoption hearings. So we met with the the city's DEI committee and our stakeholder group a week or two prior to this meeting. Go and go to the next slide. Just a little bit on our last round of community engagement, we largely use kind of the same outreach approaches as the first round. We modified it a little bit kind of based on what we thought maybe worked, worked better. So included a number of things like some fact sheets were created. They know we're going to hand it out, emailed out to the, the email list. Of course, we've had our project website throughout the duration of the project, used the city's Facebook and Instagram accounts to advertise the project, direct people to our project website. Of course, have been some City Council briefings along the way. We've met with the city's DEI committee at several intervals along the project, as well as the steering or stakeholder group, which has representation from a number of folks from around the community. Of course, we had our open house and we did an online survey, which was kind of mirroring the content that we had here in this room during the open house that was available for review and comment for three weeks. So if they couldn't make it to the open house, there was another opportunity to provide some input. Our outreach team also on that same day when we had the, the open house, they attended a WhatsApp Estacada event up at the library earlier that, in that day, just had a table there and were telling people about the project, kind of encouraging people to provide input. And then after that, went down into the downtown area, we're just walking around kind of canvassing, letting people know about the project, you know, handing out fact sheets, things like that to kind of help get the word out. I'm going to go to the next slide. Yeah, let's see. So as far as who we heard from, and of course, this is only from the folks that filled out the surveys, you know, if they just gave us verbal comments during one of these many kind of conversations, that's not going to be reflected in here. Their, their input might have been, we might have written it down, but it wouldn't have been captured in, in this information. So most of the people said they live near within Estacada, most of them travel using a car. Almost all the survey respondents were white English-speaking over the age of 25. About half reported their income of over a hundred thousand. And then they just noted that the canvassing downtown respondents were somewhat similar, mostly white English-speaking and lower income was maybe the differentiator there compared to a lot of the other input that we got. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. And again, most of what we were asking for in that second round of outreach had more to do with project prioritization, or maybe if somebody wanted a project added to the list. And so in addition to all of that input, these have more to do with some of the open-ended comments that we got that were just kind of like, tell us anything else, you know, that is of interest. And these are just some of that kind of the common trends where we kind of had maybe multiple responses similar to that. So there were folks mentioning they wanted alternatives to the highway for local travel. Need for connective travel that included safe options for people walking and biking, but not at the expense of vehicular traffic. Improving evacuation procedures was definitely a common response. I think the land use planning response, the need to improve that, I think, was tied a lot to some of the bullets down below about just in response to a lot of the development that's been happening, needing to accommodate that traffic, maintain the small-town feel was fairly common sentiment in those open-ended comments. There were some folks, I think, commenting about some of the improvements in the downtown. Just mentioned, the city hasn't listened previously to input, so there was some hesitation to provide feedback now. And then, of course, I mentioned before, all the other input we got was related to project rankings. So ones that they were kind of their favorite projects, they wanted to see move forward first. You go to the next slide. I can say before I shift gears kind of away from all the, the intro and kind of community input summary, are there any questions before I move into the TSP? I'll move into the TSP. Because I know it has been a long time since we touched on this. I think this was in our first meeting, which is probably well over a year ago, and I don't know if everybody was here for that. We kind of covered, you know, what is a transportation system plan, you know, why is it important to update it? Quick reminder for anybody that didn't catch that, this is an extension of your comprehensive plan. You're required to have it. It obviously offers a lot more detail than usually what's just in your comprehensive plan, which is kind of a list of policy statements. So this is the long-range plan establishes a system of transportation facilities and policies to meet your current and future needs. Again, we're forecasting out for the next 20 years of growth. And we're really addressing all those major modes of travel that folks are using today and potentially in the future. Go ahead and go to the next slide. And so just some of the key reasons it's important to have an updated TSP. And just through this process, I mean, the, the county has their own Transportation System Plan, city has theirs. ODOT really doesn't have one per se like the county and city, but they use the county and city TSP processes to kind of get their facilities planned too. And so these are just opportunities to coordinate on regional investments and transportation needs now and as you're, you're implementing your plans. Obviously, it's important to have an updated TSP when you've got a lot of growth happening in the community to make sure that you've, you've got the right transportation system improvements being made to support that development. And it is almost always required if you're applying for grant funding, especially with ODOT STIP funding. That for a particular project, usually one of the first things they want is a demonstration of community support prior to giving those funds is that it's included in an adopted plan like your TSP. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So I think over the next few slides, I just want to highlight some of the key changes that we've made since the document that you saw in May. And again, this was just in response to that meeting, meetings with our stakeholder groups, all the community input that we got and so on. One project, one thing we did is we added an interim project for sidewalk infill on the north side of Fourth Avenue between Shafford and Oakview Lane. Previously, the urbanization, including all of the sidewalk improvements, were in just one big project for the kind of the whole extension of Fourth. And I think it was through one of our last meetings, it was pointed out, there was a more urgent need for that segment due to safe routes to school. And so we just went ahead and broke that piece out as a separate project, so that could be more easily done sooner. Also added a project to provide more bicycle parking in the downtown and specifically near the Estacada area food bank. That was one of the, the comments we received from folks at the food bank about just noting they have a lot of customers that come and they're riding their bikes and there's not enough place or secure places to park their bikes there. So they were just asking for more secure bike parking. And then Broadway Street Greenway, that was a project that was already in the draft, the previous draft, but we modified it to better define the street right-of-way. So that's around where the school is and Broadway kind of wraps up and goes north into Campanella. And, you know, that's in the area of the school, it's hard to tell where the parking lot is, maybe where the street is at times. And so the request there was as part of the project to just improve the streetscape to make sure that we include improving the definition between kind of that, the public street right-of-way and where the parking lot is. So we just added that to the, the project description and bumped the cost up a little bit to reflect that as well. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Thanks. So some street cross-section stuff. We added one new street cross-section. And again, in this TSP, it's a little atypical. I think most city TSPs don't have so many cross-sections listed. There are a lot in this TSP. But that was really because five years ago in the active transportation plan was done, a lot of those were developed to really specify the sidewalk and bike facility improvements in all the different streets. So we just carried all that stuff forward. They're actually already adopting the TSP. We're just retaining them. But we did not have one for the gap right outside here on Main Street from Third to the highway. And so theoretically, that would have defaulted to just the standard design for a major collector. But since you already have a specific improvement project going out here, we didn't want there to be any conflict, so we just added a cross-section that matches what you're intending to build next year. So it's just all consistent. Neighborhood local streets. So that is, should have my TSP open here if you wanted to flip to it. If you remember, and for local streets and the typical designs, and this one is on page 36. We have two options for local streets. One is kind of more your, your standard local street you'd probably most often construct. That one is on page 35. And then we have the neighbor, the neighborhood local street, which is kind of the skinny version of your local street, which you are required to have in your TSP. This is the, the 28 feet of pavement between the curbs. And so that was in your last time. Last time we, I was here, we talked about changing the threshold within which it would be applicable to make it more clear kind of when you would or wouldn't do it. And so we had discussed changing that to be applicable for streets that we're serving. We, we talked about, about tan houses, single-family homes as an example. So that amount of traffic which equates to about 125 vehicles per day. So we have made that change in this version in some conversations we had during the stakeholder group meeting and just a couple hours ago with the Department of Land Conservation Development. We might want to modify that a little bit more. The concern was that if it was just strictly based on, let's say, 125 vehicles a day on that street, that, that might limit connectivity. So maybe any, the scenario that might be envisioned for that 120 or 10 houses, maybe it was a cul-de-sac or a short street that stubbed, you have 10 homes on it. But maybe a different comparison could be like the older part of, like the residential area of downtown, just, just up on the hill where you've got kind of a classic grid of streets. You generally have about five homes on each side of every block, about each side of every street. And so that would also be about 10 single-family homes. But that street extends further. So there's 10 more on the next and on the next. So maybe to avoid accidentally disrupting connectivity or discouraging it, we talked about maybe just tweaking that description. So rather than simply being like 125 trips today on that street, that the trip generation of, let's say, 125 is more tied to the adjacent land uses on that street block. So it would be more reflective of like that grid in the older neighborhood. So in that case, if you've got 10 homes on that block, it would be okay to do the skinny street. And you could, because by and large, you don't want a lot of people making long trips on those streets anyway. Those are hopefully people that are only driving a block or two, either to get to those homes or maybe to the next street up is the idea. So hopefully that would also discourage some of the like cut-through traffic or longer trips on some of the residential streets, but not preclude good connectivity.
Yes. So you're saying the confusion could be the fact that those short segments, if you add them all up, could be multiple homes on them, more than, than the 125 per day and thus could result in a wider street. Is that right? Like maybe the local street as opposed to the neighborhood local? And, and by addressing this, we can keep it more compact?
I, I think the, the concern was that if this was simply tied to like a, a trips on the street, that you might end up with a lot of, you know, short streets, or somebody might say, well, this was built. Now you can't extend the street any further because now you'd have 12 homes or something like that, or 15 homes. If, if the idea is if you're okay doing that, like I said, my, my, kind of my example is, again, it's the older neighborhood, the classic grid where you've got five homes on one side and five on the other. And by and large, you really only want people in that block to be predominantly traveling on that street. That if we tie the trip threshold to the adjacent land use rather than the street itself, that, that'll, that'll accommodate that. It could get a little bit more complicated if we tie it to the street. And then that might affect something that happens in the future, right, further downstream.
Like it would limit it. We, we've got this size street, therefore we can't expand.
Yeah, possibly. Or, yeah, or, yeah, or they just say, well, we, we can't extend the street. We have to build a different street or come in a different language. Then you would not have good street connectivity, right? And you'd have more out of direction travel and frustration and you wouldn't get the benefits of having, like I said, like you do in the older neighborhood, just a nice grid.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So if there are any more, any questions or thoughts on that? And again, that was, that was a conversation we literally had like at three o'clock this afternoon with Department of Land Conservation Development. So it's a very new revision or proposed revision.
Yeah, and I would just chime in and add that being one of the people that would review, for example, a subdivision application that might be proposing one of these streets, it will be easier from the development review side to be able to look at. It's just a, that's a much easier thing to requirement to apply and enforce in our part of the process, for able to look and say, okay, what are, how many lots are they proposing to be adjacent to this neighborhood local street? And what types of, what types of lots are they going to be? What types of uses are going to be on those lots? And then we can calculate the anticipated trips from that, rather than having to consider all of the traffic that might eventually connect to that street. That's a much harder thing to consider in development review. So it is a more clear and objective way to determine how and when to allow that type of street. So I think the question for council might, the best question to ask you guys might just be, does that 125 vehicles a day still, if we go that route, which I think is the better route to go, safer route to go, does the 125 vehicles or roughly 10 single-family homes on that street still feel like a good threshold for that type of smaller street?
I got a follow-up question. So on one of the, uh, Curran Creek, I don't remember the face, up there by the airport, we had a situation where we did a half-street improvement, but it was against a rural property in unincorporated Clackins County. And so at one point in time, we were trying to, I might have the terminology wrong, but force the developer to bond the other half of the street because we were only, he was, he was essentially doing half of a local street. So in that situation, now that we have two options, how do we ensure that he does a local street where he puts parking, landscape strip, sidewalk and a driveline versus the cheaper half of that half-street? Or he says, well, this is only half-street improvement on 10 lots. So I can see if we can go longer versus taking a full-street improvement on five lots on each side. Will that combo? I mean,
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I'm picturing the question.
I'm thinking of all these weird things that come before us as a planning commission and, you know, private roads and cul-de-sacs and all that. But that, that was one of them sticking point. And I'm just wondering, like, is this clear enough to say, no developer, you need to do local street, you need to provide parking on your development and a 10-foot driveline?
Yeah, so usually the only times someone would be putting in a half-street is when they're proposing a development and the, the half-street is, you know, along the property line of, of the site. And so I can't imagine a situation where we would approve for that reason. It'd be really hard to justify approving the local street to be allowed to be built on, on the site boundary of a subdivision, because we don't know what, you know, if, if the adjacent lot is also undeveloped, we don't know how many lots that will eventually have on the other side of the street. We could include something in the code that explicitly prevents us from allowing that smaller local street to be, to be proposed for, in situations like that where they would be put on the boundary of a site and we wouldn't have a guarantee of what the uses on the other side of it would end up being.
And I guess at the end of the day, I just want to make sure you guys have the right tools to say, no, you need to do this and here's why.
Right.
Not, hey, this is a gray area and we're going to choose this way just because it's going to save us some dollars.
Yeah, so we could either, so the, the way it's written now is that the Planning Commission would be the body to approve, actually, our, our subdivision approvals still go to the City Council. Not all cities do that. And so that's something that we might just change in here to say the decision-making body would approve the application of the neighborhood local street design. So yeah, when a subdivision comes in, that would get reviewed by the city decision-making body, which is currently Planning Commission and then City Council. But it's always, it's often nice also when your code specifies that requirement. So that is something we could add if we want to capture that to make sure.
I just want to make sure you guys have a clear path and then I'll stop asking questions that are really in the weeds.
No, it's a good.
Or try to.
Good question.
Was there consideration to the types of families that are coming into town? Like, I think when Carpenter was here, Superintendent Carpenter here, he was talking about like a lot of the demographic is young families, newer families and stuff like that. So I guess my question would be like, where do we draw the line on uniformity? Especially as we're allowing these new subdivisions to come in and stuff like that, do for the aesthetic of the community, one, and two, the types of family that are coming in, where would the consideration for that be on within this as well for the developer? That way it's not problematic for say, the new families that are coming in and purchasing houses here, right? I could speak to that from living in Campanella, sometimes having guests and things like that. Parking can be kind of difficult. People just like your road length and stuff like that where people are parking, so.
Yeah, well, we've got, I don't know if we're changing the driveway spacing standards. We, we do have driveway spacing requirements in the code. Just generally, there was a sort of general review of the community demographics in the very beginning of this project, just kind of looking at the community profile and what the population projection is looking like. In terms of the specific street treatments, those aren't necessarily tied directly to specific types of, imagining specific types of families necessarily, but Specific types of imagining specific types of families necessarily, but um there are absolutely, you know, the. Variety of modes that we're trying to accommodate with this plan. Are, you know, we're trying to accommodate those because of the variety of ways that all kinds of different people have to get around town. Um not every, you know, most people drive, but not everyone can drive, and so um yeah, those those are all considered ultimately, but.
I guess I just look at uniformity, right? Like as far as what we're doing, I'm talking specifically for the streets and the sizes, right? We wanna. Try to keep that as, I guess, open for flow as possible. Wouldn't that be the idea? I mean, especially, we got way more kids and stuff on the streets now and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I mean, this can absolutely impact. I like the families moving in can impact the priority of the projects. And there's state, there's a state grant program called Safe Routes to Schools. Um there's a federal program with the same name that particularly for quickly growing communities that have a. Cause the idea is that kids will be able to walk to school or bike to school or do all those things. And then the the other piece of that is that with younger families, it is even more important to make sure there's sufficient parking. Because the kids are gonna have friends over or those sort of things, and so, you know, that's that's like, that's an argument against the skinny street. Because with the skinny street, um you'll have less. Traditionally, what I've seen in other communities is less on-street parking. Um and so that's, that's a, that's a sort of. Factor that I think the planning commission could look at is their deciding whether a skinny street is more appropriate. And then the other thing is that. A street is a street versus a segment of the street. And so if if the street with ten houses, five on each side is gonna connect to the next. To a a empty parcel that's adjacent and has the same zoning, then then that will be something. That the city might say, no, we need you to build to the higher standard versus if it's. If it's a cul-de-sac with, you know, four houses and on each side and then two on the end. I mean, it's not, unless you demolish those houses, it's not going anywhere, so you don't have to worry about more more trips. So those are just some common sense things staff can look at as they're making recommendations to make sure there's as much room as possible and parking. Cause that's the biggest complaint that I've seen is when people don't have sufficient parking in their neighborhood and, you know, cars stacked up everywhere. It it doesn't make for friendly neighbors sometimes.
So Taylor, you mentioned driveway spacing. So over on the. It's the Faraday Hills subdivision uh up on Deuce. Um there are um the driveway spacing, there are spots on, you know, between driveways where. You couldn't park a smart car, let alone, you know, vehicles that actually get driven in Estacada. So I I would like to make sure that uh, you know, if future, in the future, we're taking that into consideration. Cause there's some of those, some of those spots between driveways, it's just way too small. No one can park there. It's just a um. Unnecessarily unusable space, you know?
That's in the other hand, Bill.
All right, uh last bullet on there. Uh we did also make a change to the minor collector typical cross-section, which you should now find on page thirty-four. Um. So let's see, last time we were here, we talked about that one quite a bit. Uh the previous version of that. Uh I believe had um a seven-foot parking lane. And uh based on the feedback that we got, we wanted to get an eight-foot parking lane back in there. The uh rub was previously, we were really trying to get this cross-section to fit within sixty feet of right-of-way. Cause that that mirrors a lot of the right, you know, right-of-way corridors that you've already got plotted and what's been built. Um so what we've done now, cause we we couldn't, we didn't want to give anything up. In order to get that um eight-foot parking back in, because something else, it just made something else too small. So what we did was we said, okay, for new streets, we're gonna go ahead and increase the footprint to whatever we need to get this to fit. Which is sixty-two feet now, so it's only two feet wider than what's typically been done in the past. And that that gives us all the elements that we wanted. Uh however, uh we did note in here uh that where you've got right-of-way that's already established at sixty feet. Uh maybe some of the streets already been built, whatever it is, and going to that new sixty-two is just not feasible. Uh you still have the ability to go back to the alternative minimum widths that we have in the table uh below that cross-section on page thirty-four. And you can make uh your own decision on which of those elements you want to modify. Uh and there's a recommendation to uh just go ahead and reduce the. Um plan or strips to four and a half feet from the standard uh five. And uh the bike lane that's on the opposite side of the parking to five feet would be the recommendation to squeeze that back down to sixty. So if if need be. So that was, that was our approach to uh responding to that. And you go to the next slide. And let's see, uh so a project from the downtown uh in Riverside area plan. Uh made its way back in here, and that was at the intersection of uh at the highway of Main Street, right, right out here. Uh pre, in the previous version, we didn't have any major improvement there. It's uh it's tricky to do something like a traffic signal so close to the other traffic signal. It's already a Broadway. Um you know, the the back-to-back left turns probably wouldn't have adequate storage and there's other complications. And so our previous solution was, well, maybe we can just make some changes at the intersection with Jeremy Lovelace. Cause it's so close to the intersection. If we can make it one way or restrict the turn movements, we can avoid some of the turning conflicts. That would at least help. Um but I think we were, we were asked to look again at the uh what I call the current curve project from the, that's in the. The image here from the downtown Riverside area plan. Uh and so we brought that back in. We still have the uh. The project for maybe restricting some movements at Jeremy Lovelace to improve safety there with the two intersections so close. That's in there as an interim project, because that's gonna be far less expensive and easier to do. Um and then the longer-term project would be uh closing the existing Main Street intersection. And then bringing it um along where Jeremy Lovelace is and down. Approximately where where the current intersection is with the highway. Uh and we did run this uh by the fire station. They've got uh plans to um, you know, modify and renovate that building. And they're, they feel like they can work with this, uh should this happen. Um so then we have better spacing also between the Broadway signal and whatever future improvement happens down at the two twelve, two twelve, two twenty-four junction. So then potentially, if you did reach that point where maybe needed a a traffic signal there at May Street. That becomes more feasible at that spacing than it is where it currently is today. Um also as part of that, if you see on the other side of the highway, it'd be realigning Acacia Road. Uh over to align with that new intersection, so you don't have any offsets. And then again, especially if you do. Whether it's a crossing improvement or a new signal, both sides will get the benefit from that. Um so that that is back in there. Um Lawrence Road, uh it was during one of our meetings, I can't remember which one, it might have been, might have been our last meeting here. Uh we were asked if the 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 project cost included. Uh a bridge or some other means of straightening out the the hairpin curve in Lawrence Road. Uh and it had not at that point, so we we went in now assume that the bridge would have to be put in there to straighten that out. Which obviously significantly increases the project cost, but that is reflected in the the T S P, both in the cost and in the project description. So you know it's in there. Uh and then we added direction to coordinate with ODOT to request uh CCTV and weather stations in the Estacada area. And that's, that's found in the resilience strategy. That was another request that had come up. Uh go ahead and go to the next slide. And let's see, so street functional classification, that's the the new street functional classification map that's shown on the screen. Uh Farmstead Road, we uh had for a while, had that as in minor collector. We changed that back to a local street. And just added a note that uh if the U G B were to expand further in that area. Which then would have more, you know, urbanizing land use on the west side of Farmstead. Uh then you should consider, it doesn't say you have to, but it at least says consider reclassifying that as a minor collector. Uh and there were some refinements done in the north end of the city in the minor collector map. Um basically, if you recall, when the, I think in the current T S P, uh there was a future minor collector that goes north-south. It goes from Deuce Road down and it's parallel to and just east of Eagle Creek, so it's kind of in that area. And uh kind of a swap was done, so Sweetwater, which has already been constructed now uh from Deuce down, but it's further to the east. Uh that will serve as the north-south um collector, and we've uh taken the other one out. Uh and then uh Project T four was added to a provide some support for area transportation assistance programs. And that was uh one of the earlier comments that we got in the project was just, I know that the county has transportation reaching people. The community center also provides, in a similar manner, provides rides for folks both within the city and in the surrounding area. Uh that can't drive to help get them access to medical appointments and things like that, but. It seems like their big constraint is they don't have enough volunteers to meet the demand. Uh and so we just have a project in there to provide, you know, whatever means of assistance you can and what you think is appropriate. Whether that's advertising, helping find volunteers, providing incentive for volunteer riders, whatever it is, but that's, that's now included in the plan. Uh oh, and just a note on the bottom about the functional classification map and the just the designation of uh uh functional classes to streets. Um that in itself does not, you know, create an obligation to go back and reconstruct your streets to match a new standard. You know, what's, what's there will be there until something happens, redevelopment, some major project. But just reclassifying a street doesn't mean you have to go back and, you know, incur some cost with that. Uh in fact, we've given kind of the fact that a lot of the streets in town still need to be urbanized up to the current standard. We have projects identified for pretty much everything in there anyway, so that would be completely independent of of that. Uh go ahead and go to the next slide. And then just a few comments from the meeting we had last week with the stakeholder group uh that we are going to uh. Apply as changes to the T S P prior to bringing it back. Uh one was a request to add a project to improve the turning radius. Uh from Lawrence Road to west, westbound Copeland Road. Um you can see in the the photo there, it's a. It's obviously a rural intersection with two rural roads that, you know, haven't been improved to meet or uh uh accommodate urban traffic. So that corner there is just a little bit tight and and in particular, as mentioned, that school buses are coming down and making that turn. And they have to really sweep out into the road to make that, so there's some, some safety issues, probably also some maintenance issues. If they start, you know, crumbling in the corner of the the asphalt. Um and so we've. While we did have projects to improve both of those streets already, which theoretically would fix that. Uh similar to kind of the Main Street project, I mentioned, we just, we're gonna proposing to break out, just like an interim project. To just move faster and deal with that that issue, and maybe that's just improving the corner um to help the larger vehicles get around uh more safely. Uh we're mixed, we had some comments um following the meeting um from our representative at Sandy uh Sandy Transit. So we'll just do some refinements to the descriptions of the existing um SAM and Paratransit Service uh to update that. And then uh we already talked about the neighborhood local street uh refinements, so we'll proposing to do that as well. Uh go ahead and go to the next slide. Uh so the high priority and financial constraint list, so this is the new part. Um so what we did, taking all the input we got from, again, city council, you know. The infrastructure committee, stakeholder group, the traffic and public safety committee, just all the various public outreach comments, school district. Um uh Sandy Transit, we um. Took all that feedback, kind of made a big matrix, worked with the city to then identify. What's kind of rising as the high priority projects. And if you remember, we kind of had all these categories of projects we're asking for input on. There was, you know, street crossings, safe routes to school, congestion, safety, all these different things. And so we, we went ahead and kept them kind of in those categories. Those are now in the the T S P. And uh left in, like what we were seeing is like, these are the highest ranking projects. Who are seeing a lot of common, you know, interest from all the the feedback that we got. And this does not mean you have to build these projects first. You're not obligated to do that because we've put them in the high priority list. This is really uh just kind of um us helping inform future implementations as you're making decisions. So uh you know what the community has said amongst all these projects in the plan. You know, whereas there have been a lot of strong community interest around those, and and that could maybe guide applications for grants or or whatever it is. Um and those lists uh in contrast to what I'm about to talk about. Um it's not restricted by how much money we think you're gonna have in the future at all. It's simply uh reflecting what the community, you know, by and large, said were their priorities in all those categories. Uh go ahead and go to the next slide. So the financially constrained project list is also in there. It's in the same section of the T S P. These are both in section, I want to say seven, but you should probably look, all right, seven. Uh so I think it's page eighty-five is where the financial constrained project list comes in. So this one's a little bit different. Um I believe you're, you're, this is in the Oregon administrative rules that talk about your transportation system planning requirements. And it, it uh has a section there in there about identifying a uh a funding program. So what this means is this is kind of the combination of uh high priority projects. But it also has to align with uh the funding projection that we did. I think last time I was here, I talked about that, and in short, what we did was we looked at. Um where you typically get your funding for transportation projects in the past, at least your stable revenue streams. We didn't account like uh one-off grants. Um and then we projected forward, looking at how much growth you're expected to have through our twenty-year planning horizon. Uh because um. Your, your biggest really source of funding for all these projects is system development charges. Uh which is obviously gonna depend on how much growth comes in. So we did base it off the growth projection. And um it came down to uh basically about nine million dollars uh for improvements for the next twenty years. And that was really only from systems development charges, because a lot of the other funding mechanisms are probably all gonna have to support. Just maintenance of the transportation system. Um so again, not to say you can't get grants that would supplement that, that's only based on kind of that revenue stream or those revenue streams. So using that nine million dollars, we kind of looked at our high priority project list, and we had to kind of mix and match and say, what do we think is a combination of these projects? That not only roughly match that, doesn't that be perfect, but it's close. But also because system development charges are restricted in the types of projects you can use to um to fund with them. Uh we had to um. Make sure the projects on that list were also ones we thought you could use S T Cs for. So we're kind of restricted in what could be on there because of that. Um so it's, again, it's not gonna perfectly match the high priority list. Hopefully, it's very similar. I think most of those projects are on the high priority list. We also tried to put them where we thought a lot of the development may be coming. Because obviously, if development goes in somewhere, you're probably gonna need to use S T Cs to get the the infrastructure and to get access to it and support it. It's logically where it's probably gonna go or would need to go. So there's, there's some similarity there as well. Um so usually the way this comes up and, you know, why you would want to have this list. Is, and and again, I think similar to the comment I made about the high priority project list. Doesn't mean you're restricted to only building those projects, you know, again, if you, if you got some grant money. Or you want, needed to spend your S T Cs on another project somewhere else, that's okay. Um you're not restricted because of this uh list in the plan. But usually the way you use this and where it comes up is it, one, it provides just a basis for developing your capital improvement program. And your S T C rates, so we use you update that. Um the other is um. If a developer wanted to do a zone change uh somewhere in the city, they're probably gonna have to do a traffic impact study. That traffic impact study is supposed to include a long-range horizon, like the twenty-year matching with T S P. That traffic impact study is supposed to include a long range horizon, like the twenty-year matching with T S P. And they would have to identify if there's any additional impacts to the transportation system that they might have to mitigate in order to do the zone change. As they do that, they can assume that any of the projects on the city's financial constraint list will be in place to help support that development. So it's kind of a major assumption in, in those decisions and uh, those impact studies. And so those are largely the, the two usage you'll probably have for that financial constraint list. Uh, go ahead and go to the next slide. So this is just kind of a quick guide, you know, if you uh, want to know, zero in on the, maybe the most important parts to review as you're, you're flipping through a hundred pages of this. Um, just as a guide, I'd say sections three, five, six, seven, and eight uh, are what I'd call more of the implementable ones. Some of the other chapters, like maybe chapters one and two, it's just setting some of the background, the context, you know, chapter two, it's just documenting our process. Whereas when you get into chapter three, that's where the goals and objectives are, you know, which might include some of your policy statements. Um, four, as just more background material, right? That was more of the documentation of the problems that we needed to address. Um, but then when you get into five, that's where your standards are, right? So that's hopefully something you're going to use quite a bit on the implementation side. And your projects are all in um, sections six and seven, with seven being those prioritization lists. Um, and then eight has a, uh, I got a slide coming up on this one, so I won't talk about it too much. But eight, eight is the strategies, which we did mention last time, but now those have developed into what are kind of effectively policy statements. So I'll come back to that one in just a second. And then of course, I would recommend, you know, looking at the functional classification map again. And there's a, a table that goes with that to just documents what we changed since, since the last T S P. So it's always good to make sure that you, we're comfortable with uh, what we're showing there. And then of course, we've talked about street cross-sections quite a bit. Um, and we talked about the changes we've made since last time. But those, I think those have also been a, a topic of interest. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So uh, this is what I was talking about in the strategy section. But so before this was a, it was in the project alternatives memo that we talked about last time. Uh, I don't think a lot changed other than before. In each of these, the, the language was more of kind of like making recommendations, like here's things the city should think about doing, right? Or we recommend doing X or Y. Um, should statements aren't terribly helpful in a T S P. It's kind of a, you know, do it or don't do it is generally what we need, the language we need to have. Um, and so we've changed those shoulds into will statements. So effectively, these are, you know, actionable policy statements. Um, in a lot of cases, it's, you know, maybe, might be, you know, we'll consider this further or we'll, you know, do a refinement uh, study or investigation of some sort to see if this is something you want to do. But we just, we've changed that language. So I would say definitely look through that strategy section. We um, put all of that language in those text boxes you see on the screens. We put it in bullets. We put a big box around it. So they're hopefully really easy to find. Um, you don't have to sort through all the other texts. You can zoom right to it. So I would say definitely, definitely take a look through that. Make sure you're comfortable with all the language that's in there. Um, and then it's other than that, a lot of it is again, just the project lists. You know, did we miss something? Was there a project you've, you've heard is of interest or you know of that when, you know, now when you come back and look at it, it's just, it's maybe it's just not in there. Uh, we certainly have time to make those adjustments, get a new project in there. And then also, you know, the high priority list, the project, the financial constraint lists, you know, those uh, similarly are not set in stone. We can modify those still. Um, so that would be things to think about as well. Um, go ahead and go to the next section. Alright, so I'm transitioning. I, I have finished my T S P slides. And before we uh, go to Matt, who hopefully is, is online there, uh, who will talk more about the uh, the code revisions that would accompany this to implement the T S P. I guess I'll turn it back to you for any other questions.
Yeah, questions or comments, feedback?
I, I'm not a big fan of the rerouting traffic onto Jeremy Lovelace. I just, I, you know, I, I, first time that was proposed, I, I didn't like it. I mean, I understand the fire department's going to be, you know, redoing that building. But um, I'm just, I, I don't know, just not a big fan of that, you know, putting more traffic right there in front of the um, making all traffic go in front of the fire department. I'm just not a, uh, I just, I don't, I don't like it.
I have a question on uh, let's see, page forty-eight. He goes through the typical street cross-section locations. And just looking like number twenty where it says uh, you go down to figure twenty back on page thirty-nine. So Highway two eleven, two twenty-four north of the U G B. A project like that looks great on paper. Um, but it looks like a lot of money. And so if, if it comes to ODOT wanting to just frankly go out and repave, this isn't considered, right?
What's not considered just ODOT repaving?
Well, no, this, this street cross-section or are all future improvements having to fit within this?
They should, yeah. And, and this was, that cross-section again, came from when we're working on the active transportation plan five years ago. ODOT, well, they, they helped fund it with through a grant, but they participated in that. So as part of that, they uh, had a hand in kind of a development and improving that cross-section. So that's, that's what they would like to see also for the highway.
So logically speaking, fixing the pavement and potholes and, and just making that a highway costs whatever, two million dollars a mile. Whatever the number you want to pin the tail on the donkey is. This is going to be seven, eight, ten times that by the time they do all these improvements. So like from a actual community livability standpoint, how much longer do we have to wait to fix the highway to get the funding to do something like this versus just pave the dang road so that we can get out of town?
Okay, maybe I misunderstood your, your question. So just to clarify, if ODOT needs to do a paving project, like or just to fix the asphalt, they can do that without doing this.
Okay, okay. That's, that's what I just wanted to make sure of. I didn't want to make sure that we had to do all the pretty stuff that we did here, all the way up there just to get the highway fixed.
No, yeah, those, those can be separated, yeah.
Okay, thank you. But simple, perfect.
And I have to say, I'm kind of on board with Jerry there. It's a first. I know, it's a moment. But uh, the road cutting in front of the fire department, I think he did it just about a few times back in the day. Um, it was never a good idea because that's a major traffic street and it didn't work for almost everybody who travels down it. So I would prefer that we, we try to avoid that situation. Um, but all in all, it looks pretty good, so.
What will trigger this cross-section coming into effect?
It could be, you know, uh, uh, separate from a paving, it could happen as part of a paving project. If ODOT had extra money to go ahead and do more than just paving. But usually they are pretty limited when they're doing those kinds of projects. Could be a major project, more than likely, a lot of it's going to be development driven. That's usually how most streets, you know, if you've noticed, end up getting upgraded, improved. It's when the development comes in and they can contribute to doing half-street improvements and things like that. So um, I mean, as you can imagine, that corridor right now, right? There's really no development through most of that stretch. So it's, I'm guessing it would take a lot of that development, right? Coming online and actually, you know, kind of building out, and then that would generate the improvements.
And building out and having access directly to two twenty-four, right? So like the existing uh, industrial park expansion wouldn't trigger that necessarily. If somebody's putting like, I know there's a twenty-seven acre VOT one going on right now. There should be no reason why they would trigger half-street improvements on the highway if they're a quarter, half mile away, right?
Right.
Okay.
Is there an alternative to moving the traffic light if it's in a bad position or a bad place?
It's possible. It's funny that, that hadn't come up prior to the stakeholder group meeting last week. Somebody kind of asked that question. But nobody's ever indicated that that would be an interest in the community before. And I, I don't know where people would stand on that one. So it could be a little bit tricky because, I mean, it's, you lose the utility of it on both sides, right? So if, if that were beneficial on the south side as well, you know, what does that look like on Main Street? I mean, you have to think through all those things, but it's, it's possible.
Alright, any other question? Well, it's like we're good, so let's hand it over. That's if we can get through. Before we go on here, we're probably going to be a few minutes late on the city council to get this last part in. Am I right with that?
Um, the city council meeting is scheduled for seven thirty today. So um, we might even be early for that. And I think you see Matt Hasty online. Yep, there he is. So Matt, we're going to promote you to panelist real quick. And should we unshare the screen for a second or I don't know if it matters?
I'm, I'm ready to go when you are. Can you hear me?
Yep, hi Matt.
Hey. Alright, should I dive in?
Yeah, well, we can leave the slides up then. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, alright, well, thanks for having me. I just have um, I think three slides, two or three slides to go through. So I'll be relatively brief. Um, I'll talk first just about, you know, what are the objectives um, in terms of updating your municipal code. And then I'll talk about what some of those proposed um, amendments to the E M C are. So one, just making sure that your code is consistent with the T S P. Um, two, that um, the code is updated to reflect the objectives and the recommendations in the T S P to the extent that those things are regulated in your code. Um, and then three, uh, ensure that development's supported by the transportation system and vice versa. So those are kind of the main objectives in updating the code. And I'd say a fourth one is just consistency um, with uh, state requirements as well. So, uh, next slide. Alright, so there's a few proposed changes. Um, one, just making sure that transportation uses essentially improvements to transportation facilities are allowed in each of your zoning districts. Um, and one of the changes that's being suggested is just say that in one place in your code instead of everywhere. Um, two, we're proposing to update the requirements related to transport or to, excuse me, traffic impact studies. Um, so right now you've got some, you've got requirements for traffic impact studies. They're fairly, I will say fairly basic requirements. And we are suggesting updating those to do a number of things. One, kind of create a two-tiered system where there's an option where if the impact is um, not as big in terms of the number of trips being generated, et cetera, that there's a kind of lower tier requirement for the study at traffic um, assessment letter. But if it's a larger project, then you continue to require a traffic impact study. And the updated code just provides a little more detail um, on that, you know, what are the thresholds for these processes? So when do you require one? What are the types of things you can require? What are the types of conditions of approval um, you can place um, on the results of a traffic impact study? Um, what's the scope of that traffic impact study look like? So it's really just kind of providing more detail about those requirements that's consistent with best practices um, kind of across the state in terms of how those traffic impact studies are required. Um, so there's a fair bit of the language in the code updates is related to that topic. Um, creating an airport overlay zone, I won't go into a ton of detail about that. Um, yeah, but can answer questions or I will say that that was, that work's mostly been done by your staff with some review and guidance from the consulting team. Um, but making sure you have a zone in place um, that regulates development um, around the airport and on the airport property, consistent with how you want to do that with what makes sense in those areas. Um, another update to the code is just to make sure that notification requirements related to development proposals are sent to or provided to um, affected transportation providers. So that can include ODOT, it can include the county, TRIMET, um, or San Diego Metro. So just making sure when those, those um, applications come along, that those folks get notified. So they have an um, opportunity to comment if it's going to affect their facility or their service. Uh, next one. Um, some requirements around pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Um, so there are some amendments that um, add some requirements where larger parking areas are being developed and other types of development that you ensure that within those areas, you're requiring um, particularly pedestrian um, facilities for people to walk safely um, within the parking areas or developments in between parking areas and developments or parking areas um, in the adjacent streets. Um, allowing conditions of approval to be applied to transportation-related improvements. I mentioned that briefly earlier. And then there are some changes just to make sure that the roadway classifications and the cross-sections that John described earlier um, are consistent with the T S P. So those things are in your T S P, they get applied through your development code. So making sure that those two things are consistent. Um, and that you're showing what the required um, dimensions are in those cases. So I won't walk through all those sub-bullets because John already talked about those different, um, those different things. And then finally, um, increasing access spacing standards for major and minor collectors to be consistent with the T S P. I think that might be it, but maybe go to the next slide. Let's just make sure. Yes. So that's all from me. I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have about those code amendments. Um, um, if you have them.
Alright, thank you, Matt. If you have any questions for Matt before he, thank you, Matt. We appreciate the presentation. You did great.
Alright, thanks. I appreciate that.
Alright, now I'll hand it back over to you, Taylor.
Okay, well, I think um, I'd like to invite any additional comments, feedback, questions. See you, Hannah.
I, I just want to check, we, we'd had a couple of comments on the uh, current curve, the relocation of southeast Main Street, Acacia Road. Um, what, what do you need from us here? I mean, why, we, we've had two comments. What are other thoughts here as well too? Is this something that before we, first off, this is a, a wishlist basically, right? This is, it's on the high priority though, but it's, it's a wishlist. We, we, it's in there because we feel like that intersection needs to be addressed. I believe that's the primary reason that it's in there. Is, is this something that we should take time to understand more what's proposed on this? Should we look at alternatives? What, what do you need from us on this? I guess that's question number one. And question number two, we brought up the um, neighborhood local streets being small and, and, you know, in like Campanella. Um, that, that's another one that would be helpful to know what, what are the sizes of some of those smaller streets in Campanella versus what's proposed here as well too, that could give us some perspective as we're talking through this. So the first one, the uh, current.
Yeah, it would be helpful to, to hear everyone's feelings on that and, and the specific, if you're able to articulate the specific concerns with it. I don't know if it'd be helpful to maybe pull that slide back up onto the screen while we're talking about it. Because yeah, we have, we have time to make changes to what's being proposed before we bring this back to adoption hearings. And so definitely if there's something that we're feeling like might, um, we might get hung up on during adoption, it'd be good to, it'd be good at least for us to understand what the multiple different preferences are so that we can kind of prepare for, you know, one of multiple options to come through.
People have, it's one curve on it for Lovelace.
There, that one.
Can this get labeled as more of a fixed uh, connector between Main Street and Highway two twenty-four versus calling out the current curve? Cause there, there is an issue there, there's no doubt. But I think the general public dislikes this design. Uh, and rather than put this in there because it's been there before, maybe just put a blanket statement of fix Main Street and two twenty-four. Just put a blanket statement of fix Main Street and two twenty-four.
Sorry, yeah, thanks.
Alright, in the T S P, we can leave the solution more open-ended. It's nice if we can provide some guidance, like maybe consider a this or a this, uh, we could. Leave that as a consider, we could also throw in a consider relocating the signal Broadway. Plus, of course, you're saying the current curve is an absolute no, and you don't want it in there as a consider, we can do that, too. Uh, so we don't have to know the exact solution as long as we've got. Well, we can put in a cost estimate, and at least it is approximate, and hopefully can cover whatever you think you're going to do there. Um, so that, that could be one way to address it. Um, one, one thing I should note about. The current, existing current intersection or potentially this one, if it went in without a traffic signal, is there is a. A project in here as well to put in a, uh, emergency signal for the fire department, so that could go in. You know, now at current, it could go in in a future, whatever you've got, so that, that, that's in here as well.
So, m- my issue with this is, uh, I'm one of those people that turns left there every morning. Um, I turn left off of Main Street, you know, I turn left right here every morning, and, uh, the traffic coming from, you know, two eleven. Shortening that. You know, shortening that, you know, by making people turn left, you know, further up the road, there's, there's less of, you know, less time. You know, with that traffic that's turning left onto two twenty-four, when you're trying to turn left, you know, it's just, it, the. And then plus, of, of course, the traffic just going, you know, all that traffic that goes, that will be going in front of the fire department, I just think is. You know? That's my issue, but, yeah, just, you know, have, taking away that distance, you know, it just. It, it makes that, makes that left turn onto two twenty-four, you know, more hazardous.
Yeah, and this, part of this is kind of a timing thing, too, because we have a project at the junction of the highways down there to either do a signal roundabout. If that happens before the Main Street project, that's going to change the, the platooning, right? The, how, how the cars are coming at you if you're trying to get on Main Street, rather than being random, they're probably going to be bunched up more, especially if it's a traffic signal, so that. That could help in some ways, but again, it's. Kind of depends on which one happens first, we don't know.
I, I was just going to note, part of the recommendation is that an engineering investigation be performed to determine if it's appropriate. Appropriate at that intersection, the proposed one here to have a traffic signal too, and, and I think we talked about that, it could be timed with the Broadway one. As well, uh, so, so it's not just an open, proposed and open intersection, um. The proposal is that, that a study be done to see if even a, a traffic signal would be appropriate there as well. And I'm not even, neither, I'm neither for or against it myself, but I'm, I'm with, uh, Ben here, I think. Traffic area intersection improvement, I think is a good idea, and maybe we provide this as an example.
I would like to know, like. Is there a cheaper way to do it? I mean, that seems like a lot of work and a lot of cost. To add that, like, what's the, you said that's on the priority list, right, it's higher on the priority list, this intersection is, so. Is there? Something that's like, I don't know, just financially less impactful on the community for this?
Yeah, I mean, like I said, probably the most straightforward, cheaper way, right, would, without having to. Um, do any street rail alignments, right, ripping up concrete asphalt would be if you could probably drop a traffic signal in. As I mentioned before, is I don't know that that's really going to work as close as that is to Broadway, so that, that gets complicated. Um, cause you might not have enough distance to store cars in that center turn lane, right? That want to turn left in one direction, left in the other, and just being so close together, it's tough to time signals to really be compatible, so it's. I'm not, uh, very, I'm not terribly confident ODOT would want to put one in that close, which is kind of one of the benefits, if you could move that further away. Now we can make it workable. Which, you know, like I said, an alternative is. If you thought there was more value in having a signal at Main Street, if you're relocating it. You don't have any of those issues, it's, now you, you know, you might have other issues that you have to mitigate some other way at Broadway, but. Like I said, that's. Not sure what all of those are, having not really dug into that.
I guess I would just like to support Ben on this also, that I think the definitely improvements needed, but I just, I don't understand the. The big reroute, if you will, like if there's something that we could do that would be a little bit more. Yeah, like that would suffice, and I'm not saying cutting corners by no means, but something that's not as financially impactful.
Taylor, is there been any other ideas as to that reroute type of intervention besides the one that goes into the fire department?
Was it slightly different the first time, did, did this? The curve get changed from what it had looked like back when we did, was it the active transportation plan? Or is that pretty much what it was?
No, that, that is straight from the, uh, downtown and Riverside area.
Yeah. Um, then no, I, not that I'm aware of other alternatives for that intersection. That have been designed, no.
Alright.
It's a tough one.
Yeah, it's a tough one, it's going to take us a little time to figure that out, I think, but pulling that off as a priority. Might be a good idea, like Zed, uh, looking at alternatives, I'm sure we can all put our heads together and go with something that'll work for everyone. Um, in a timely manner before this becomes the final.
Right.
That said, is there anybody else who'd like to comment?
I would just say that keep the, the intersection. As a priority, but maybe just this design is not the number one unanimous decision. If that's, that, that's kind of.
I'd agree with that.
Yeah, alright, so, so from hearing that, yeah, we can keep it priority, but we can change the description of the project, so it's more open. To exploring alternatives, and it's not specific to that.
That works.
Okay. Alright. Any other questions or comments?
The, the neighborhood local streets?
Oh, yes.
So how? Do we have examples of areas that have neighborhood local streets now? Because if I'm counting.
Cities or in Estacada?
In Estacada, if I'm counting houses in Campanella, it doesn't seem like we would have many places for those.
Yeah, I, I haven't actually gone out there with a tape measure, but I am pretty sure you have built some of those streets, uh, in a. I know they're at least kind of in the north part of, in Campanella. Uh, where they look fairly skinny, there's parking on one side, I think they're very similar, if not that same design.
So the proposal that we would be looking at by having that fifteen house, is that right, fifteen house kind of guideline?
Ten to twelve.
And, okay, ten to twelve house guideline, would put it on a pretty small street then. You know, it wouldn't be, like, if I'm looking at Campanella, there's. You know, twenty houses up and down on each side, on Bagby, Campanella. Streets along those lines, so it doesn't seem like those would. Would be ones that would have the, the small ones then, that future. Uh, subdivisions that go in would be required to have the neighborhoods, streets. Not neighborhood local.
The regular local street.
Right, right, parking on both sides.
Right, yep.
Yeah, okay, and that's just for my own clarification, to me, that sounds like a, a good direction to go.
All one that might be an example is, uh, Deuce Road, as you go in there, the first street to the right. To the west, it's labeled as Clearwater, and it looks like it dead ends into a retention pond.
In Faraday, in the Faraday Hills subdivision?
Yeah. And so that just has a, a strip of houses between it and Deuce Road would be one of those where it would qualify for that.
And so the way we were describing rewording it to make it, um. More clear and objective would also make it more likely to be, um, to be able to put in. Either as a dead end or cul-de-sac or as just a really short block, so. So, yeah, like, like the streets in Campanella, they're pretty long, you, that we wouldn't have been able to apply that smaller. Um, option for those streets, because there, there are a lot of homes on. I think all of the streets in Campanella are much longer than what we'd be able to apply this one to.
Okay, thank you.
I think mine's more of just a comment, and it's just that I'd like to see uniformity, and whatever we decide, I want it, what. I don't think it makes sense to let the, just let the developer decide whatever's cost-effective for them, I think. It should be community-minded on that, you know, especially going forward, I'd like to see it be something that. Like, okay, in the instance that we are having families move in, right, or multifamilies or whatever. That, that there is sufficient parking for birthday parties and different things like this, these people are spending six hundred thousand dollars on a house anymore. Out here, I mean, parking should be the least of their concerns at the moment.
Any other questions? That's it? Any else, Taylor, that you'd like to add at this point?
I think that's it, um, just many thanks for the good comments and explanations of the comments, we really appreciate that. I think we've got good direction and we'll be packaging this up. Um, we are working on potentially rescheduling the November fifteenth planning commission hearing, either to later that same day. Or to, uh, a day close thereafter, um, due to quorum concerns, but we will keep you all. Posted on that, and, um, we will let the council know about that meeting ahead of time, so that if you want to tune in and. Hear that conversation, you're absolutely encouraged and welcome to. I mean, it's open to the public, so, of course, alright.
Thank you, and thanks staff for putting this together, we appreciate it. And now we'll take a short break, we will start in ten minutes, so if you wish to make comment during the council meeting, we have, uh.